Oh Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all our songs commend. With glowing hearts we see the rise, the true North, strong and free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
To Caitlin and Emily, thank you very much for joining us this evening. On behalf of the members of council, I wanted to thank you for gracing us with your rendition of "Oh Canada." Thank you again. Appreciate it. This time, I'm going to ask Councilor Di Addati to lead us in prayer, please.
By your heads, Father and Son and Holy Spirit. People are often unreasonable, illogical, and self-centered. Forgive them anyway. If you are kind, people may accuse you of selfish ulterior motives. Be kind anyway. If you are successful, you will win some false friends and some true enemies. Succeed anyway. If you are honest and frank, people may cheat you. Be honest and frank anyway. What you spend years building, someone could destroy overnight. Build anyway. If you find serenity and happiness, they may be jealous. Be happy anyway. The good you do today, people will often forget tomorrow. Do good anyway. Give the world the best you have, and it may never be enough. Give the world the best you've got anyway. And the final analysis is between you and God. It's never between you and them anyway. Amen. Father, Son, Holy Spirit.
Thank you. Members of council, the first item on the agenda is the adoption of the minutes of the council meeting of April 28, '08, moved by Councilor Fisher, seconded by Councilor Peter Angelo. Are there any changes or additions to the minutes? Any comments? Having seen none, all those in favor, motions carried. Thank you. This time, I'm going to ask for any disclosure of any beginning or interest with respect to any matters on the agenda this evening. Councilor Carrion.
Thank you, worship. Under the checks, there was a refund on some tax issue. May note to myself, check may note to myself.
Okay, thank you.
Very small check, may note to myself.
Councilor Peter Angelo.
Thank you, worship. Under checks as well, although there wasn't an actual check number, it was a wire transfer made out to the Niagara Catholic district school board, my employer.
Okay, so noted. Anyone else? Having seen none, I'd also like to declare a conflict on check number 319250 payable to myself. At this time, I'm going to entertain deputations. I'm pleased to announce that we have representation from the YMCA this evening. Mr. Steve Butts and Mr. Greg Shupe are going to be making a presentation related to the YMCA and the McBean Community Center. So, gentlemen, welcome this evening. Please come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm chair of the board of the YMCA of Niagara and a resident of Niagara Falls. I'm pleased to be here to pass along an update on the ongoing and remarkable story the McBean Community Center continues to tell. I'm also here to present the fourth of five installments of the YMCA's $1 million commitment to the McBean Center and a second check representing campaign pledges received this past year. This contribution totals some $450,000. I'm joined tonight by Steve Gutt, CEO of the YMCA of Niagara, who's here to respond to any questions you may have. Over the past year, we are delighted that the YMCA membership surpassed 8,000, representing growth in the order of 600% since our fourth Avenue days. While the numbers tell one story, my perspective as an active family user is that the McBean Community Center has become much more than just a building. It is a center for the community, a place that helps to integrate Niagara Falls, bringing all of us together, young and old, able and those with disabilities, those with resources and those without, to grow, develop, learn, become healthy, and to strengthen families. The YMCA's commitment to Niagara transcends simply a building. Our purpose, together with our partners, is to create a healthier, more caring community. To this end, with McBean as the centerpiece, our program book growth in employment services, youth outreach, and childcare continues to connect with local neighborhoods and establishes the YMCA as a leading partner in the provision of community services here in Niagara Falls. A particularly important priority you share with us is the way in which we serve families and children. Fully 60%, or 5,000, of all those participating in the YMCA are under the age of 16. In total, 70%, or 6,000, people belong to the YMCA as part of a family. Fueling this growth is the new family membership structure we've introduced in the past year. This program provides children full access to all YMCA programs for very affordable fees when joining as a family. I should stress, this is in addition to our commitment to ensure that no individual or family is ever turned away from the YMCA. In 2007, we invested nearly $500,000 supporting the participation of some 1,700 individuals. Let me illustrate this commitment through the story of an individual and his family who are here tonight, who are part of the YMCA. I'm pleased to introduce Shane Meridien.
Steve. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I was approached last week, actually, to make a quick two-minute to four-minute speech to council regarding the Y. And when I was approached, I sat down and I started writing a few pages out and trying to figure out, you know, what I could tell members of council about the YMCA. Two pages grew into four pages, it grew into six pages, it grew into eight, and trying to keep it under two minutes, I tore it all up and threw it all out. I have five beautiful children and a wife, and if it wasn't for the YMCA, basically, my family wouldn't have a lot to do. We're there pretty much every day, five days a week. We cannot afford a complete, full membership. Fortunately, the YMCA has afforded us a way of being able to come down every night, whether it's swimming, whether it's karate, Play Pals, daycare, childcare, all of that wonderful things. I have one disabled child that wasn't able to fully integrate into school right away. And through Play Pals, four nights a week, he has exploded with speech, interaction, playing. Autism is such a wonderful, yet very weird sort of disability, and we've been able to sit back and watch my five-year-old just blossom at the Y. My oldest boy is nine years old. I couldn't throw him in a pool in my backyard without him flailing about, screaming with a death grip on my arm. And in the last three years, my boy now jumps in the deep end of the pool with no aids whatsoever. He can swim laps at that Y, outdo me, probably outdo half of council here, and it's just, it's been absolutely wonderful. I thank members of council for allowing us to build such a beautiful Y here in town. Next year, hopefully, by midsummer, my oldest boy will be getting in the youth corps, so that's going to be our way of trying to put a little bit more back into the Y for our family. And hopefully, you know, with the way things are going right now, maybe one more child down the road, my membership fee's going to go up just a little bit more, but you know what? It's well worth it. And I thank members of council, all in the city of Niagara Falls, for being able to help us out to be able to afford to go into the YMCA. Thanks.
Thank you, Shane. In summary, the YMCA remains committed to the purpose and potential of the McBean Community Center. Our operating agreement with you asks us to provide services to the whole community that is both inclusive and economically sustainable. This does not include taxpayer-funded operating subsidy, a position we want to maintain as we seek opportunities to maximize facility capacity at McBean, capacity which remains substantial today even in light of these impressive results. To remind council, this obligation is to operate prudently, this obligation to operate prudently is in addition to the $1 million pledge. Our own capital investment of $2 million in program and equipment associated with startup and our leadership on the capital campaign that went $1 million over its original goal of $2 million. The message I want to convey through this report is for us, the opening of the MCC was not the end of something, but just the start. Our approach is to let our actions and our results do the talking, providing the platform for the kind of prudent and disciplined planning that created the McBean Community Center in the first place. I hope you agree, there's much more we can do together. We remain very thankful for the strong and trusting relationship with the city of Niagara Falls staff, colleagues, John McDonald, Denise Morrissey, Steve Hamilton, and the support of you, Mr. Mayor and this council. Thank you very much for your attention, and Steve and I would welcome any questions you might have, and I believe we have a couple of checks to pass.
Great, thank you. Members of council, questions for Mr. Shupe or Mr. Butts? Yes, Councilor Di Addati?
This one's more for Mr. Butts. I didn't realize, looking at the Niagara Magazine, that you were the Dunnville Junior Tennis Champion, and I just wondered if you used any of the skills you learned there in running the, being the CEO of the Y.
Have the trophy in the car and I'd be glad to...
Okay, okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Councilor Peter Angelo.
Hey, worship, I don't want to ask any questions. I think the only thing I'd like to say is that the McBean Community Center, and I believe is our most successful municipal building in the city, with over 2,000 people that go through the doors each and every day. And I personally, worship, would like to thank the YMCA as well. Last year, I approached the Senate manager at the Y, Mr. Ted McDonald, with the idea of bringing children with special needs there from the high school that I'm at and integrate them into a swim program. Not only was Mr. McDonald open to the idea, but he also made some capital improvements in the Y that makes the entire center more accessible. So, for that, worship, I'd like to thank him.
Certainly, and I wanted to just echo the comments of the council as well, that Greg and to Steve and others, the executive are view commended. Certainly, our staff has been able to work very well with your executive, and this has been an extremely successful partnership. I am very proud. Every time I go there, it's bustling with activity. We have been the focus of other municipalities coming to investigate this unique partnership in P3, providing the community and the residents with the great facility that we have here, and the partnership is working out very well. So, on behalf of the members of council, I can't thank the Y enough for the excellent work that you do and the fact that we've heard a success story this evening with one family. I'm sure it affects many, many, many more families in our community. So, congratulations to the Y and to your executive and for what you've done, and to all those involved on our staff as well for the excellent cooperation we've been able to work out together. Thank you so much. Making a presentation? Okay. This is, thank you, sir. This is the final one next. This is this year's installment. This year's installment, so again, we have a check, we have one more installment. This is for...
This is the fourth of five.
Fourth of five is for...
Four hundred, $450,000.
Yeah, $450,000, members of council and the ladies watching at home. So, thank you once again for the commitment and dedication to follow through with such a whip-off. Thank you so much. Members of council, we have another deputation this evening with regard to the window boxes of Chippewa, the competition that takes place annually. We have our, this is our seventh year of competition, and with us, we have Marilyn and Rich Judge, who are going to outline the program once again. This has been an extremely beneficial program where the youth of our community are involved. And Rich, I'll turn it over to you to explain further. Thank you very much for being here.
I'm Mayor Solcian, members of council, city staff, and fellow residents. My name is Rich Judge, and I'm a member of the Window Boxes of Chippewa Committee, and part of our committee is sitting in the back here. They're a little camera shy, so they've asked me to give you an update of what we're about. It is our seventh year this year. Last year, we took a year off. We had a few committee members with some medical problems, so we're really enthusiastic to get back in again. And basically, the program is to encourage residents of Chippewa to plant window boxes and businesses, to beautify the community, and so far, it's been very successful. This year, on June the 14th, we'll have our Children's Planting Day. It's a free planting day for kids and teens. Wealth supply's last. We have to add that because two years ago, in 2006, we had over 115 children participate. And all of those window boxes, soil and plants are provided free by Chippewa Hasty Market. Just a wonderful community effort on their behalf. On June 21st, we're going to have a fundraiser barbecue at the Chippewa Food Land. On July 11th, all registrations must be completed, and they can be handed in to Chippewa Food Land, the Hasty Market, or the Royal Bank. And we used to have our judging days, now we have a judging week because we have such great participation. That's July 21st to the 25th, we'll be visiting all the homes and businesses to judge the window boxes. And then on August the 10th, we have our awards night at Covington Square during the intermission of the concert. This program, it's been very successful, but could not be without the generous support of our sponsors. And after having taken a year off, you just don't know if people are still going to support it. Well, I can assure you, the corporate sponsors have been fantastic again this year. Excuse me. In addition to the general beautification of the community, we have some other goals. In 2006, with the assistance of Parkin City, in the city of Niagara Falls, we had three large window boxes installed at the Van Shell in Covington Square. Unfortunately, within one week, the vandalists had destroyed all the flowers, ripped them out and threw them all over the square. I have spoken with regional police, but perhaps there's some assistance we can get from council. Vandalism in Covington Square is just far too prevalent. And the unfortunate thing with a program like this, the vandalism discouraged businesses from participating. And if we can encourage all those businesses along Covington Square to participate, what a wonderful view that would be entering the village of Chippewa. So, we do hope to raise funds for more floral displays. Our dream project is to put large window boxes on the bridge itself. Again, that'd be a wonderful welcoming display for the community. So, the city has been very good to us. We really, truly appreciate your support, and on behalf of the Window Boxes of Chippewa, we'd like to present a plaque to the city in recognition of their support, and also to recognize the efforts of all of our participants over the years. And this plaque could be hung at City Hall, or at the Community Center, or another building of your choice you think would be appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
And the plaque just shows pictures of our participants over the years since 2001, and it's pretty neat. It's really a neat community event. And if you get a chance to come out for a kid's planting day, please do so. I was with the fire department for almost 30 years. I never thought I'd get involved with something like this, but I'm telling you, that day when those kids are out planting is just awesome.
Happy members of council, Hurlivich, and your wife, and the members of the committee, I want to say thank you very much. I've been involved with the competition each year, and I always enjoy going out there to see the children and how they progress, but also the fact that you're making our city a better place. And thank you very much for the commitment you make, and actually, to educate our children and to make Niagara Falls a better city. So, we do appreciate that. We'll make sure this is hung in a very appropriate spot. Thank you for your commitment to our city. Thank you.
Thank you. I see tonight, they've also requested a temporary street closure through Laura C. Court Place, and that's a very short street, so I would make that motion, and I feel that then they could go.
Well, also, we need a request to actually waive the fees for the road closure, so the staff will have a recommendation for us. But on that, moved by Councilor Fisher, seconded by Councilor Thompson. Any discussion further? Having seen none, all those in favor, motions carried. Thank you very much. Thank you again for attending council. Mr. Clark, could you introduce the next item on the agenda, please?
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to permit a cottage rental dwelling at 5007 River Road. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, April 11th, 2008, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment to participate in any site plan process, if applicable, or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board, shall leave their name on the sign and sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'm going to ask the Director of Planning to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Hurlivich.
Thank you, worship. Excuse me, this property involves the house that's on the screen in front of you, 5700 River Road. Property is located at the southwest corner of Bamfield Street and River Road. It's in the, on the edge of a residential area facing the Niagara Gorge. Properties to the southwest and north are residential properties. The site plan in front of you shows the location of the existing building. There's a garage at the back of the property with access up Bamfield. The background behind this is the property is, the applicant is seeking a zoning change for the property. It's approximately 7100 square feet. It has the two-story detached dwelling that you saw in the photograph. The applicant wishes to add a new use to the property, and that is to be allowed to rent the property as a cottage rental dwelling. It'll remain much as it is, as a single-family dwelling, but it'll be, allow the owner to rent it on either a daily or weekly basis. The cottage rental dwellings are similar to bed and breakfast and are similar in scale to those types of accommodation. The only difference is bed and breakfast are typically owner-occupied, whereas these cottages will be rented exclusively to small groups of travelers. The official plan for the area is designated residential. Residential dwellings are to continue to be the predominant use. We also have policies in our official plan for the River Road Satellite Tourist District, which encourages bed and breakfast up to four bedrooms for guests as long as the residential character of the neighborhood is maintained. The cottage rental dwellings have been permitted in this district in the past on a site-by-site basis where they're determined to be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. Our review of this application finds that the application does conform with the official plan. The cottage rental dwelling is an alternative form of tourist accommodation, which is similar in scale to bed and breakfast, which are already permitted in this area. There's no expansion proposed to this building. The cottage rental dwelling is not expected to generate any more traffic than a typical single-detached dwelling would, and provided that the number of dwellings units are limited to four, this will keep the scale of the building similar to what's surrounding this, and it'll address the fire department's concerns. The zoning is currently a residential, single-family, two-family zone, which also has special provisions for bed and breakfast. As I've mentioned, they wish to add the cottage rental unit as a specific use. They are also seeking an exterior side yard setback of zero feet rather than the required 15 feet. This actually applies only to the stoop steps on the north side of the building. The bylaw also permits bed and breakfast that would continue up to four bedrooms, so we're recommending that this dwelling as a tourist cottage rental be limited to four dwellings to ensure compatibility, as I mentioned, to address fire services. Therefore, we found that this application is consistent with the official plan, and provided the cottage rental dwelling is limited to four bedrooms, will be compatible, and we're recommending approval of the zoning bylaw before council tonight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hurlivich. Members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral written submission at this public meeting will result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral that it receives. Failure to sign, the sign-in sheets will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per Section 34, subsection 19 of the Planning Act. At this time, council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anyone present other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw For the third time, is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment? Having seen none, then council will now hear from the applicant or his or her representative. Will the applicant come forward, please? Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Yes, welcome, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything you want to present to council?
I could just like to assure you that my wife, that manages a business in Niagara Falls, has for 10 years, and we live out in Jordan Station. We own a cottage rental in Niagara Lake, and we can do this very professionally. And just to clarify, it's not going to be different individuals. It would be a group of individuals, primarily family members is what we've run into, and the end result is that, the truth is, people end up staying longer, and we found that in Niagara Lake, and really feel Niagara Falls has a lot of potential. And I think there's a lot of people that come to the Falls that aren't able, for given reasons financially, to stay longer than perhaps a day or two days. So, we're really wanting, by the way, a two-day property minimum, and that's what we've done in Niagara Lake, and it's generally the easiest way to go.
Very good, thank you. Are there any questions for members of council or anyone else present that would like to ask a question? Mr. Hagerman? Having seen none, thank you very much, Mr. Hagerman. Thank you. Then, the public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. Pleasure of council. Moved by Councilor Peter Angelo, seconded by Councilor Di Addati. Any further discussions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor, motions carried. Thank you very much. Thank you. Mr. Clark, would you introduce the next item on the agenda, please?
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to permit a three-story, 24-unit apartment building, and it's located at 6289 to 6311 McLeod Road in the rear portion of 7175 7189 Drummond Road. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, April 11th, 2008, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment to participate in any site plan process, if applicable, or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board, shall leave their name on the sign and sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you very much. And once again, I'm going to ask the Director of Planning to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Hurlivich.
Thank you, worship. This property is located on the north side of McLeod Road. It's largely vacant, although there's a house that shows up on your left side of the screen that's currently to be demolished and incorporated into this property for development. The site is located on the north side of McLeod Road, between Drummond Road and Hexamore Avenue. Immediately to the east is the Rex Motel, as well to the east is the back of the church property that fronts onto Drummond Road. To the north are single-family dwellings that face onto Hawkins Street, and to the west are single-family dwellings that face onto McLeod Road. The properties on McLeod Road are zoned TRM, which is a transitional residential multiple zone. It's a holding zone that's designed for future redevelopment of the properties. The site plan on the left is the drawing that the applicant has submitted with this particular application. The building is to, is for a three-story, 24-unit apartment building. The lands are currently zoned in the front for a three-story, 20-unit building, so what is, they're intending to do is add some additional lands at the back of the property that are to be conveyed from the church to the east. The layout is predominantly with the parking along the east side of the property and also along the north end of the property. There are two handicapped parking spaces shown between the front of the building and McLeod Road. We've suggested to the applicant that they actually move the building forward, and that's depicted in the right-hand drawing on the picture, so that the handicap spaces would be relocated, but what it does is moves the building forward and keeps the whole front yard for landscaping. It sets the building further away from the residential properties to the north. There is a refuge container, excuse me, refuge container area for waste from this apartment building located in the northeast corner of this particular side. I bring this to attention now because it was the subject of a letter that's been in the council packages. This arrangement also allows for a more efficient arrangement of the parking in the back of the building, and as well, a wider green space strip between the parking and the fence to the north so that there can be some additional plantings in that area. The background behind this property, as I mentioned, it's actually two properties totaling .8 of a hectare. The first, the front parcel is zoned R5B now. It already permits a three-story building, 20-unit apartment building. It has special provisions already attached to that property. The back of the property, the north half of that property where we're pointing out, the parking lot, is zoned institutional. It's part of the church property to the east. the parking lot, is zoned institutional. It's part of the church property to the east. So there, and the lands are currently vacant. The intent, then, is to add those lands to the parcel one, zone the entirety of the parcel to R5B with special provisions relating to the height and setback. In reviewing this application, we find that it is consistent with the provincial growth plan for the Greater Golden Horseshoe, and it is in line with the requirements the city will be required to implement by 2015, that 40% of all new housing in the city needs to infill projects similar to this one. The lands are designated residential, and lands near minor commercial areas, schools, parks, arterial road are encouraged to be used for apartment buildings rather compatible with the surrounding developments. Apartments in this area are limited to four to six stories with a maximum of 100 units per hectare, 40 units per acre. The proposal does conform with these official plan requirements. The density is actually 70 units per hectare for 28 units an acre, so under what the official plan would allow. It also has a height of three stories. The property would front directly onto McLeod Road, which is an arterial road, minor commercial. I mentioned that there's a motel to the east actually abuts this property, and there are schools and parks in the, in the area. Transit runs along McLeod Road. The official plan requires that multiple family be compatible with the surrounding area. The applicant is requesting additional height. This is to put a peaked roof on the building to reflect the residential character of the area. I mentioned that a little bit further when we get to the zoning. The property as well has a 23-meter setback from the property to the, or properties to the north. We're suggesting that the building be moved another three meters towards McLeod Avenue, or McLeod Road, rather, which will increase the rear yard setback, providing for more landscaping. We feel that the proposal therefore does meet the character of the surrounding area. I mentioned the applicant's seeking the R5B zone. They will maintain the building as a three-story building, which is currently allowed, but they would like to have a pitched roof. Therefore, they're seeking a bylaw amendment which would increase the height of the building. Coming with the height of the building, the bylaw provisions measure side yard as being one-half of the building height, so that the, the height of the new building would be 828 feet, including the pitched roof. Therefore, they'd require a 14-meter, or 14-foot side yard. The applicant is actually proposing a side yard setback of 6.25 meters, which would be the same as required for a flat-roof structure. Because the building would be in character with the surrounding area, we believe this would be appropriate. The, this drawing shows the elevations of the building. You can see a three-story building with the pitched roof. The side yard setback then on the left side or the west side of the building would be 4.25 meters, and it would apply to that side. Only the other side would be subject to the standard requirements. The council saw that there's parking and driveway on the other side for the elevation of the particular building. The zoning of the property is appropriate to be the R5B zone. We would also add specific provisions that would require 25-meter setback from the rear yard, which would allow the parking arrangement that we saw in the landscaping. This is 82 feet from the backs of the abutting residential properties. It would allow for a 3-meter, 10-foot wide landscape strip along those properties between the parking lot and the fence, and it would require, or provide for parking, or, sorry, landscape strip between the parking lot and the front lot line along McLeod Road. The application would be subject to a site plan agreement, and at that stage, we would address the servicing landscaping, fencing, and garbage facilities. Site plan is designed to address grading and lighting as well. The, in conclusion, we find that the property, or the proposal does conform with the official plan. The increase in height is intended only to accommodate the pitched roof design, and the set-specific provisions will ensure a greatest degree of compatibility with the residential area. So we're recommending support of the application, which would allow the three-story building with 24 apartment units.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hurlovich. And once again, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral written submission at this public meeting will result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheets will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per section 34, subsection 19 of the Planning Act. At this time, council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anyone present other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment? Welcome, sir. For the records, please state your name and your address.
Ken Medjell, 6361 McLeod Road.
Okay.
Now, when this construction takes place, I assume it's going to be the same as the apartment that's being built right now with McLeod and Wilson. Now, at that complex, all construction workers are parking on Wilson or they're parking on Dell Avenue, making each road into a single-lane road, which isn't that bad because both of those roads have sidewalks. Yet this property is 80 feet from Hexamore Avenue, and there's no sidewalks. And Hexamore Avenue is the main route to Hexamore Street School from the McLeod Road area and Prince Charles Park. I've seen it numerous times there. The cars are shooting down McLeod Road heading towards Drummond, and they see the light turn yellow at Drummond, and they make a quick left. And many times, I've seen kids come within inches of getting hit. I've seen vehicles lose control and wind up on my neighbor's front lawn. They're going so damn fast. My fence was taken out two Octobers ago. The neighbor's car got taken out, and he hit this nice big love rock I got in the front yard, and he did a 180 in the air. Luckily, nobody was hurt, because engine wound up through the hood hitting that rock. But this is my concern, is like, if there's no sidewalks on that street, there could have been, but the city didn't want them. They're going to be installed free, at no cost to the city, but they refused it. Why? I got no idea. But this is my main concern. Like I say, that, there is no sidewalks on the north side of McLeod Road, between McLeod and Hawkins Street. They took the crossing guard away from there. I don't know why. They put the crossing guard down at Drummond and McLeod, where there's traffic signals.
Okay. Let's see if we get your questions answered, sir. So are you concerned about the parking as well during construction?
Yeah, well, obviously, like I said, they'll be parked on both sides of that street, making a single lane. You get one car from one way and one the other way, and who's going to back up?
Okay. Let's see. Yes, Counselor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, your worship, there is a letter actually in our handouts that somewhat addresses parking during construction.
Right.
It's from the Brethren in Christ Church, and it says, and I quote, "We are so in favor of this project that we have offered our church parking lot as off-street parking for the neighbors of this project if needed." So I don't know if that's going to alleviate the gentleman's concerns or not, but that's from the Brethren in Christ Church. I'll give you a copy.
But that still is not going to stop everybody from parking on the side street.
Do I understand you saying that that could be where it would be?
Because I know occasionally, what I was doing intentionally is talking, parking a one-ton dump there, 80 feet from McLeod Road. A neighbor was parked, drove a chip wagon. He parked near McLeod Road. Now, how many times I'd be sitting in that house, I hear the brakes squealing. If somebody's going around that corner, it's such a rush, and all of a sudden, you see the back of that one-ton sitting there.
I guess all I was trying to point out, your worship, is that it's a very good option for the developer to have.
Sure, sure. Do we have any comments from staff with respect to the parking issue? Mr. Holman or Mr. Hurlovich, would you have any comments with respect to that, or is it just a...
To your worship, I mean, some of, some of the concerns that are being expressed are something that it sounds like is occurring with or without the construction taking place. So it's something that maybe we'll have transportation look at and look at the concerns that are experienced out there. Another option may be during the construction, we implement no parking restriction on one side of the street.
Okay. Sure, that might be a possibility then, if that's your concern. Okay.
I just can't see the 18-wheelers delivering the material, parking in that church parking lot. They're not going to allow it in there.
We'll ask the applicant of that as well, so we'll try to get an answer for you there, too.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the matter? At this time, then, council will hear from the applicant or his representative. Mr. Body, you want to come forward, please?
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Salsey, councillors, city staff, and fellow residents. We're very excited about having this development come forward in front of you today. And just as far as the parking goes, I guess, I guess Mr. Peter Angelo's got a copy of the letter, and the church is very helpful and looking forward to this project, and they've offered us the parking, and we have no problem with no parking on the city, on the side streets during construction. I might add, this, this particular building is, is quite different than the one down the street because this building has no basement. Therefore, the amount of, amount of heavy equipment going to go in is going to be, is going to be extremely less than the one down the street.
And I presume all your deliveries are going to be made on-site as opposed to being on the road? Is that...
That's correct.
Fair to say? Okay, good. Are there any questions of Mr. Body? Yes, Counselor Fisher and Counselor Peter Angelo?
I'm just interested in knowing the size of the units.
There's, there's a couple of one-bedrooms. Most of them are two-bedrooms, and there's two three-bedrooms.
The size?
Size. They range from about 750 square feet. I can give you exact, actually, they're in meters.
That would be a one-bedroom.
Yeah.
A 750.
Yeah, they're approximately about 750 to 700 square feet.
There'd be one-bedroom, two-bedroom. Are they going to be self-contained with furnaces and et cetera, et cetera, because you've got a pitched roof?
Yes, yes. Every unit will be self-contained. Every unit have its own heating system.
So at some point in time, you'd like maybe to convert them to condominiums?
Actually, they're, they're designed to be condominiums, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. And we received two pieces of correspondence on, on this particular application. One of them, as I already mentioned, was from the church, and the other one is from some of the residents in the neighborhood, your worship. I won't actually mention their names. I'm just wondering if the developer, Mr. Body, had a chance to read the letter, and if he did, whether or not he was able to address it with the residents, or whether he wanted to address some of your claim.
Yes.
Mr. Body?
I did receive the letter this morning, and it was talking about grading as far as touch basins and other concern that was fencing and lighting, as well as garbage, garbage in the back of the property, and all these issues will be addressed at the site plan stage.
Okay. Are there further questions by members of council, or those present? Okay, having seen none, then, the public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded, and the pleasure of council. Counselor Diodati?
Move the recommendation.
Moved by Counselor Diodati, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. Any discussion? Counselor Wing?
I'd like the residents who wrote to us to be included in the site planning, and if they're not satisfied with the results of it, for it to come back to us.
Okay, is that okay with the move to second? Okay, fine, we can add that as a friendly amendment. Any other comments? Having seen none, we'll call the vote. All of in favor, motions carried. Thank you very much, Mr. Body. Mr. Clerk, could you introduce the next item on the agenda, please?
Your worship, a public meeting is now being convened to consider a condominium conversion at 5521 Drummond Road. Notice was not required under the Planning Act but was given as a courtesy to the existing residents on Thursday, May 1, 2008. Anyone who wants notice of council's decision shall, shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you very much. And once again, I'm going to ask the Director of Planning to explain the purpose of this application.
Thank you, your worship. The, this application involves a proposal to convert an existing rental building into condominium. The building is depicted on the slide in front of you. It's a four-story building fronting onto Drummond Road and extends some depths to, toward the west of the Drummond Road. The property is depicted on the map for you on the screen. There's a number of single-family houses to the north, as well as, there's a notch out of this map. There's a, an apartment building, a small apartment building in that location. The property to the south is also a large apartment complex. Across the street are predominantly detached dwellings, but there are also a number of businesses located in that particular vicinity. The site plan shows the configuration of the apartment building. There are 56 apartment buildings, or 56 rental units in the apartment building now. The, a large percentage of the lot is devoted to parking. The parking area wouldn't satisfy today's requirements for parking spaces, but there's sufficient area that should, if you need to add additional parking in the future, that would be possible through the, through the existing zoning on the property. The property, as I've said, is a 56, 56-unit rental building, and to convert that to condominium ownership. The city has an official plan policy that protects rental housing unless the vacant, when the vacancy rate is below 3%. According to the latest statistics from Canada Mortgage and Housing Corporation, the vacancy rate in the city for apartment buildings is 3.2%, and therefore satisfies our minimum requirement. As the clerk said, there's no requirement for a public meeting. We're holding this for courtesy for the tenants in the building. Recommendation therefore is that the proposal be draft approved, subject to standard set of conditions which are settled in the report. The, and the, the approval will last within three years if it is, if it is not registered within that time. Therefore, we're recommending support of the application.
Thank you, Mr. Hurlovich. And at this time, I'm going to ask if there's any questions from members of council. Having seen none, then, council will now hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to this matter. Is there anyone present? Yes, please come forward, sir. Just be kind enough to give us your name and address, please.
Okay. My name is Clarence Nix. Can I stay at this dwelling here, 5521 Drummond Road?
Yes, okay, welcome. Go ahead.
Okay. In layman's terms, I'd like to know exactly how that applies to, say, me and some of the other tenants that have accompanied me here tonight in regards to if this conversion goes ahead, how does it apply to like the regular tenants if they don't change this? Say, I don't want my unit to be turned into a condominium. Does that mean all apartments are going to be turned into condominiums? And will my rent go up substantially if, you know, I just choose to stay and pay my own rent as, you know, my normal rent increases? I mean, it doesn't seem like you're going to just like build 40 condominiums and keep regular rental apartments there at that same rate. And advance notice, et cetera, et cetera. If we can give you some answers in regards to that.
Okay. The questions you're asking are all controlled by statute, sir, but I think we can see if we can get an opinion from our solicitor. Would you, Mr. Bean, would you like to give a comment, some free legal advice?
No. I think that it will be a dangerous venture into, like, if it was. Can you, if you're concerned, can I ask a question?
Sure.
You, you live in a building, you think...
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
I think that it was a course of action for me to take. The, I will provide you with my card, and I'll try to put you to the legal aid clinic, that specializes in the intent to provide you with this situation. The, I can say that the degree in which your rent could be increased is governed by statute. It's still subject to the Tenant Protection Act. Whether or not that could work for you... Whether or not that can work for some of the property, so in that sense, your rights will remain the same.
Mr. Beeman, perhaps our Director of Planning could just more freely, without getting the corporation involved, just respond to the question if, as far as normal practice goes? If you wouldn't mind, is that okay?
Well, I can answer the specific question as far as tenure is concerned.
Yes.
It will remain the same.
Okay, good. Thank you. All right. Mr. Hrilovich, did you want to say anything further?
I would just echo Mr. Beeman's response, and Mr. Enzio might wish to speak to that more directly. By and large, as the solicitor has outlined, whoever purchases the unit, if they choose not to rent them, they may choose to rent them. Typically, what we see happen is that the building's owned by a number of investors, the units are split up among the investors, they continue to rent them. However, should they wish to use that for their personal purpose, they would have to give notice under the Tenant Act. Again, the rents are controlled under the Tenant Act, so as long as he's an existing tenant, he's subject to those rent increases. If he was to leave the building, the landlord can then rent the unit at market rate.
Okay. That is your question, sir?
No, it doesn't.
Okay.
So that means if an applicant comes by to my apartment, he has someone that wants to, say, my apartment wants to be changed into a condominium, he has an offer from someone to buy, then basically I would be evicted, or I'd give 60 days, 90 days' notice, or whatever, in order to get out because he has a prospective buyer?
No, your tenancy is protected by statute, and you have the right to occupy the unit as long as the owner doesn't want to occupy for his purposes, as the Director of Planning said. So they have to legitimately show that they want to occupy the property, but if they sell it, your tenancy's still in place. And I think, Mr. Hrilovich, you want to confirm that, if that's further the point? I don't, we're getting some legal points, you may want to ask your lawyer.
I'll defer to the applicant.
Okay, thank you. We could have that happen, too. Yes, is there a comment from councillor Thompson?
No, I was just going to respond to the question. I've had enough experience as president of a condominium association for years. The gentleman is protected by statute, and they can't come and tell you to get out. They can only increase your rent according to the standards that are all set down in the statutes, and they can't put you out of your unit unless you don't pay your rent or if you're a nuisance to the other tenants. They have to have a legitimate reason, so you're fully protected, as far as I know.
Okay, may I ask you this question? Have you ever, you've been in a condominium business, as I said, in a building, you know, where there's one or two rental apartments that weren't converted over to condominiums?
Yes, excuse me, sir, just if you would. You can direct your comments to the chair, but all the building will be converted, sir. The whole building will be converted. And you have rights as a tenant that you don't lose, and that's what we're trying to say to you. But you may want to consult with your lawyer if there's further information required, and maybe the proponent can explain that as well to you. But your legislation is in place now, and by statute, you're protected, just like you would be if there was a rent increase next week and there's no conversion? Do you understand the point, sir? Okay? All right? We'll see if we can get some more of that answer for you as well. Okay, is there anyone else other than the applicant who wishes to speak to this matter? Is there anybody else other than the applicant? Again, we'll ask the applicant then to come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Your Worship, members of council. My name is Angela Yanozilo, and I'm a representative of the owner. And maybe I could start with the question that was asked. Certainly, I echo all that I, that other members have said, that the tenants are protected by the provincial landlord and tenant legislation that's in place, and therefore, all of their rights remain through the conversion. I might add this one other point, that, as was stated, that the individual owner may give notice if they wish to occupy the unit personally. However, I assure this council that the investors that we are talking about will hold in the form of a corporation, and so there will not be any personal wish to occupy any of the units in this, in this building. So this is another additional component in terms of this particular proposal here. I know that there has been some questions that, along those lines, and I hope that that answers the concerns with respect to the tenant protection. We have worked with staff and have, are quite aware of the staff's report, as well as staff's recommendations and the conditions, and we will continue to work. We certainly support the staff report and the recommendation, and we will continue to work closely with staff to address all of the lists of conditions that have been applied. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions further from members of council? Are those present? No? Well, thank you very much, ma'am. Thank you. And once again, the public meeting with respect to the proposed draft plan of condominium is now concluded, and does the council wish to make a motion?
Move the motion.
Councillor Thompson moves the motion, seconded by councillor Fisher. Any further comments? Having seen none, all of in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you very much, everyone. Members of council, we have a number of miscellaneous planning matters. Does council wish to deal with these in their entirety? Councillor Thompson? Councillor Thompson moves items number one to five. Is your second for that? Councillor Peter Angelo? Any discussion or comments? Having seen none? I'm sorry, councillor Einoni?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's great to see a number of applications coming for commercial building and facade improvements in both our CIP areas. That's what it was intended when we passed it, and I'm really glad to see that the business owners down there are taking the initiative to go forward on their own, so I'm really glad to see these go forward.
Thank you. All of in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you very much. Members of council, I have a couple of comments this evening. I'd like to begin by offering my condolences on behalf of myself and members of council to Mr. Ray Miller of our City Clerk's Department on the recent passing of his father, Lewis Miller. Our thoughts and sympathies are with the family at this time. I would like to continue by acknowledging some recent notable events in our community. And first, let me congratulate the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee students on this year's successful battle of bands competition. Over 400 people came out to watch the bands perform, and the winning band for the third year running was the Broken Liar, liar, I should say, from St. Michael's High School. We are very proud of this event, and we congratulate the students on a well-run, family-friendly competition that saw major support for young musicians in our city. Also, Anne Meyer Secondary School hosted the Ontario Student Babbington Championships at Brock University. The competition began on Thursday, May 1, and I was pleased to welcome the athletes, coaches and families to Niagara to take part in this awesome event. I would like to congratulate the organizers and the participants on a highly successful and exciting tournament. Our congratulations to the winning athletes as well. I'd like to mention some upcoming events that will be of interest to members of council and residents that are going to be taking place in the next two weeks. This Saturday, May 17, is the date of the annual tug-of-war between the Niagara Regional Police and the Niagara Falls, New York Police Department and Niagara County Sheriff's Department. Participants will assemble on Clifton Hill at 2:00 and proceed to the Rainbow Bridge, where the tug-of-war will take place. The RCMP will have their new horses in attendance as well. We look forward to a successful showing by the Niagara Regional Police Services during this annual goodwill competition. The City of Niagara Falls welcomes schools, corporations, sport organizations and members of the community participate in the 10th Annual World Challenge Day. As you may be aware, Challenge Day is a worldwide event with a goal of moving every citizen and encouraging them to break their daily routine by practicing some form of physical activity for just 15 minutes on Wednesday, May 28. 2008 will be the fifth year of this, Niagara Falls has been involved. Each year, participation has increased, and our goal for this year is to have 14,000, 15,000 community members of all ages moving toward a healthy, active lifestyle. And please join the City of Niagara Falls in becoming a healthy, active community, and to participate in Challenge Day 2008, please contact our Parks and Recreation and Culture Department. Thank you very much. We have, the next on the agenda is the communications and comments of the city clerk. Do you want to deal with these items in whole, members of council, or do you want to... Councillor Thompson moves items one to four. Is there a second to that? Councillor Fisher? Any discussion or comment? Having seen none, all of in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, are there any additional items for council's consideration?
No, Your Worship.
Okay. At this time, we have a request asking if anybody is interested in the following property matters. We have a matter with regard to a declaration of surplus land and offering of sale for a property known as Liberty Street. We have a sketch before you, members of council.
I'd wait to hear the response, but if not...
Obviously, there's nobody here.
I'd move one and one.
Okay. Councillor Thompson moves both items number one and item number one under Community Services. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, councillor Mayes?
I have a conflict with the helicopter landing over Park.
Okay, so noted.
Insurance involved in that.
Okay, is there a second to the councillor Thompson motion? Councillor Kerry, thank you. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all of in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. This time, I'm going to ask for ratification of Community Services Committee actions. Call on councillor Einoni as chair.
Thank you. The following items are to be ratified from tonight's meeting of the Community Services Committee. A, that the minutes of the April 28, 2008 be deferred. Two, that reports CAO 2008-02 People Mover Project update, that council authorize the staff to continue working with the People Mover Project to investigate the feasibility of a phased approach to providing RFP-2, and that staff investigate the legal implications to other potential suppliers. And under new business, that staff meet with Mr. Red Epison regarding the rerouting of trains and the site is upon, so moved.
Moved by councillor Einoni, seconded by councillor Diaddati. Any questions or comments? Having seen none, all of in favor? Motion is carried. This time, I'd like to call on the Chair of Corporate Services Committee Actions with regard to the recent meeting held last week. Councillor Peter Angelo?
Thank you, Your Worship. Following items are to be ratified. First, it was approved that the minutes of the April 26 meeting be adopted as recorded. Under reports, report CPS 2008-03 dealing with the water and sewer rate structure update. It was recommended and approved that the additional analysis and public consultations be undertaken to determine what is appropriate for a new water and sewer rate structure. Second item, we dealt with the VDD 2008-02 dealing with the Niagara Convention Center Compliance Team. It was recommended and approved that the Ziedler Partnership be awarded as a compliance team for the Niagara Convention Center and Civic Center project, as well that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the necessary agreements, and also that council authorize staff to prepare the requests for qualifications and requests for proposals for the design, build, construction. Last report, Your Worship, was MW 2008-22 dealing with the Kaler Road-MacLeod Road to Rebuild Street Road reconstruction and underground services. It was recommended and approved that the unit prices submitted by the lower tender given contracting be accepted and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the necessary agreements. Two items under new business, Your Worship. It was approved that staff report to council on when the Montrose Road Bridge be closed due to construction, and I think we got an email from staff this week on that. As well, Your Worship, it was approved that staff report on the site plan for Ray's Autobody and any opportunities for better access now. So moved.
Moved by councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Diaddati. Any questions or comments by members of council? Having seen none, all of in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. Move on to the consent agenda, members of council. Moved by, moved the entire matter by councillor Kerry, seconded by councillor Thompson. Any questions or comments? Having seen none, all of in favor? Motion is carried. Mr. Clerk, are there any additional bylaws or amendments to the bylaws for council's consideration?
Just a slight administrative change. The bylaw numbers are misnumbered. They should start at 2008-75 and go to 2008-85, so every number's moved down one in the sequence.
Dash 85? Thank you. We have a motion to introduce the bylaws. The bylaws be given a first reading, moved by councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Fisher. Again, council's heard the motion. Any questions or comments? Having seen none, all of in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you.
Bylaws 2008-75 to 2008-85 were at a first time.
We have a motion to give the bylaws a second and third reading, moved by councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Diaddati. And once again, council's heard the motion. Any further comments or questions? Having seen none, all of in favor? Motion is carried.
Bylaws 2008-75 to 2008-85 were at a second and third time and passed.
Thank you very much. Members of council, new business? Councillor Wing?
Thank you. I have two items. First of all, following up on the report in the consent agenda addressing our leadership role in terms of workplace health and safety, since we've signed the community charter that the WSIB presented to us several meetings back, I'm putting forward a resolution to the Minister of Education and the local school boards, asking that the annual day of mourning be observed in our local high schools. It should be noted in the morning announcements, at the very least, and I'd leave it up to the individual boards or schools to decide if they want to do a broader program, but the WSIB tells us that young workers are much more likely to suffer workplace injuries due to their inexperience. And I think even just having it noted and perhaps, you know, letting them think about it, is something that's very important as our high school students enter their working lives. So the fact that workplace injuries can and do happen are preventable, but to be aware that people actually lose their lives on the job sometimes. So my resolution is that we ask the Minister and the school boards to...
Okay, moved by councillor Wing, seconded by councillor Einoni. It's a great idea, I think, councillor, as well, and certainly to give more emphasis as well to the day of mourning. I know that this year, we had a conflict with our schedule here at City Hall, but certainly we did have a chance to try to rectify that with those participating. So again, hopefully next year, we'll have better exposure, and we do think this will help as well. So you heard the motion? Any questions or comments? All of in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. Second item?
And my second is a resolution in support of a recent motion out of the City of Toronto, which was unanimously endorsed there, which is pretty amazing if you follow what happens with Toronto council and all. But it's a resolution calling for protection for residence groups and Ontario Municipal Board decisions, request for anti-SLAPP legislation, and SLAPP is an acronym for Strategic Lawsuits Against Public Participation. And how I became aware of this was, there was an article in the May 3 issue of the National Post. Michael Walker, who's spent 25 years in public office, is the councillor who put this on the floor in Toronto. He was concerned that this could arise with increasing frequency and imperil the right of the public to speak on issues without fear that participating in the democratic process might spark lawsuits. He said, "You can't have a democracy if the citizens haven't got forums where they can speak their minds without fear of retribution." And apparently, this has become a real issue in the U.S., and there's a movement now toward passing this kind of legislation. About half of the U.S. states have done so, and there's actually a resource center on this at the University of Denver Law College. It defines the practice as being sued for just telling the government what you think, want or believe in, which can include writing a letter to the editor, joining a demonstration or speaking out at a public meeting. The lawsuits themselves are often without merit or even frivolous, but the point is often to spread fear among critics or tie them up with the expense of evidence to defend themselves. And I asked our clerk, and thank you, Dean, for doing so, to print off a copy of the Toronto's motion, the Toronto motion for tonight's meeting, and it basically just calls on the Ontario Municipal Board to, well, it calls on the provincial government, I'm sorry, to ensure that they pass legislation against this sort of strategic lawsuits against public participation involving cases before the OMB. So my resolution is that we back up Toronto.
In support of that resolution?
Yes.
Okay. Councillor Einoni, seconding? Okay. Any comments or questions with regard to the support of that resolution? Having seen none, all of in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. Anything else on your business? Councillor Diaddati?
Mr. Worship, two items as well. The first one I would bring to attention to the council. I'm going to make a motion. Out front of the old YMCA on Fourth Avenue, there are some no-parking signs that are there, and as you know, the place is vacant, we don't have cars coming and going every day. There's no parking signs out front of the building, and we were regularly getting $40 tickets. And at one time, it served a purpose with traffic coming out of the parking lot. I'm sure there was a blind spot, but that's not been the case for quite some time, and I would make the motion that we remove those no-parking signs and immediately ask staff to stop enforcing on that street. We've got families that are there using the sports center parking on the street, and it doesn't, it no longer serves a purpose, and I would make that motion, Your Worship.
Councillor Peter Angelo, seconded. Okay. Any questions or comments of the motion? Having seen none, all of in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you.
Okay, and one other one, Your Worship. At our last council meeting, we had an issue between the Lundys Lane BIA and the Quanis Club members, and I think some of us have received some calls and some emails, and I did offer to bring it forward to this council to invite the Quanis to at least plead their case in a situation that's, you know, that's sitting before them on Lundys Lane. And I would make a motion that we invite the Quanis members to this council to address their concerns.
Okay. Do you have a second to that motion? Sorry? Yes, Mr. Beeman?
If council does support the motion for the Kiwanis to attend, I would recommend that motion include instruction to myself not to send the notice to the Kiwanis concerning the preservation of their rights until some time the Kiwanis has had their opportunities to address council.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So noted. We have a motion by Counsel Diadati to have the office re-attend council, to attend council. Is there a second to the motion? Is there a second to the motion? The motion fails, then? Counsel Thompson?
Yeah, I think they have the right just to contact the clerk and come and speak at any time, as they had the opportunity to speak at the last meeting, but they could not make it at the last minute. I've never heard anybody being turned down if they wish to address council and if they wish to do that, they have the right to do so. But if they do, we might as well have a full debate and make sure that both sides of the argument are available so we can hear both sides at the same time.
It's a good comment. We haven't turned anybody down from coming to speak, but we have a challenge and a problem with regard to our solicitor giving notice. So what does our city solicitor do in the interim? Counsel Diadati?
Your worship, it would seem apparent that he'll have to give notice, but my question is just in clarification, so if the Kiwanis Club was to approach this council, there wouldn't be any legal issue of them coming to address us, especially having been given notice of the termination, the early termination of the contract. Just want to confirm that, your worship.
Okay. Mr. Beeman?
The complication that the woman is not so much notifying the Kiwanis, but the B I A is enthusiastically corresponding, if they wanted to know what the notice is set out and they're basically going to start ordering benches at that point. My concern is that if council, I've heard both sides wishes to reconsider or project or that's on top of my proposal, there may be some push because of expenses that B I A is in.
Okay. Counsel Inonie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the B I A left that meeting believing that our motion was good and that notification was going to be given. We weren't asked to do a motion to reconsider, which I wouldn't support. We, you know, the comment was made, they can come speak to us, but we did give staff direction and short of rescinding that motion, that's the direction I believe they have to follow, or the B I A is going to believe that we aren't acting in good faith.
I can appreciate that. I know that there was a discussion downstairs with respect to the fact that there was no representation, but they didn't choose to send anybody that day, unfortunately. So we have a motion that has been presented, there's been no second to the motion and there's no consideration. Yes, Mr. Clerk?
Yeah, but despite that, I've got a letter from the Kiwanis, so I'm going to put it on the agenda. So...
So you do have a letter?
Yeah.
Would you confirm with us, please?
Yeah. It's been forwarded to me.
Okay. So the clerk advises that he has a letter that the Kiwanis wish to address council? Counsel Wing?
Did the Kiwanis not send notice at 2:35 PM the day of the meeting, an hour and a half before the meeting was to begin, saying that they wouldn't be in attendance?
Mr. Clerk, was that correct?
Yeah, it was probably around that time. They were given notice that the matter was coming back about a week in advance, the week before. The Thursday, I emailed them the actual staff report because we don't release those till after we know council has them. I did play some phone tag with Mr. McEwen on the Monday, but he did send me the email later in the day, although he had indicated to me in his first voicemail in the morning that they couldn't attend. So 2:30, I think, is a bit of semantics, but it was definitely on the Monday of the council that he indicated he couldn't attend.
About a week following, having been given notice about the meeting?
True, but in fairness to him, he would have got the report on the Thursday before the meeting and, you know, for whatever reason, decided that he wasn't able to attend or representatives from the Kiwanis weren't able to attend. My understanding from him is that he's really the point person on this and no one else could sort of substitute for him at the meeting and he had a prior commitment for whatever reason.
You know, quite frankly, I don't think the existing agreement should ever have been signed. There was a dispute at the time, it came forward, you know, and the Kiwanis signed the agreement knowing that clause that we invoked was in there. I mean, this is really ridiculous.
Counsel, I know we're getting into the...
This has been going on for so long. The B I A has been divided over this. They've come together, there's some really good things happening there now. You know, this is just going to throw everything into turmoil again and Counselor Thompson put it very well last week when he said that, you know, this is this case of people trying to make a living out there on Lundys Lane and some of them are really, really struggling, I can tell you, versus a service group. And, you know, we all appreciate the effort of the service groups and the other volunteer groups in our city. However, you know, what it comes down to is there's people whose livelihoods depend on this. I mean, you know, this, we've been jerking that B I A around for over two years on this issue now. I think it's time to put it to bed and I'll make a motion right now that we direct our solicitor to send that letter to the Kiwanis, asking them to remove the benches forthwith.
There is, it's already been done, so that's...
Well, I'm sorry, if the motion's already there, then why hasn't the letter gone